Good?
Yep.
Okay. We good down here? Y'all ready? Okay. Ron, are you ready? Okay, just checking. I'd like to call the Planning Commission for April twenty-second, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five to order police. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Josh?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
James?
Here.
Candy?
Here.
Donny?
Here.
Before the approval of the agenda, we're gonna amend, public hearing item number four to reflect two items that are on the actual agenda are one fifty-three, two-ten, which is off-street parking and loading, and item one fifty-three, one-eighty-one, which is the prohibited signs. Then, under the Planning Commission, we will vote on that, so we'll add that to item number four. If I get approval of the agenda adding that.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Who seconded that?
James.
Okay. Kevin?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And approval of the March twenty-fifth minutes.
How about we approve the March, minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
Candy?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
At this time, I'll open it up for comments from citizens, and this is for anything that's not on the agenda. So if you've got something you'd like to discuss, please come to the podium, state your name, address. Keep it three minutes. Seeing none? Anybody online? Nobody online? No old business. We'll actually go into the public hearing. I'll call the public hearing to order. Item number one is a conditional use. I'll just, I'm gonna reference here, just public hearings are actually for the public to come up and speak. The commission does not interact on anything, so it's if they wanna come up and just talk about an item. I don't want you to think we're just staring at that person and not saying anything. We're listening, but we're gonna wait till we get to the public, to our actual Planning Commission meeting before we discuss, so. Item number one is the conditional use. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit located at thirty-six seventeen Old Highway sixty-eight. The property is zone C-two commercial located on three-point-three-six acres. Their request is for improved yard. Oh, pardon me, yeah. Impound yard. Parcel number is given. So at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody online?
No.
Nobody online? Okay, we will close item number one. Item number two is a rezone request. The applicant requesting a rezone located at ten-seventy-six North Barrington Road. The rezone request is from agricultural to residential estates and R-two, which is single-family residential located on five acres. Parcel number is given. At this time, I'll open it up for public. Item number two. Anybody online?
Yeah.
I will close item number two. Item number three is a variance request. The applicant requesting a variance located at three-sixty-four Penzo Avenue. The property is zoned R-three, located on point-two-five acres. The request is for setback requirements. This time, I'll open it up for public. Anybody online?
No.
Seeing none, I'll close item number three. Item number four is the city of Tawney Town is holding a public hearing pursuant to one-fifty-three, two-ten, and one-fifty-three, one-eighty-one ordinances to amend in this chapter for the code of ordinances for the city of Tawney Town. At this time, I will open it up for the public on these two items. Anybody online? Nobody online. I will actually close the public hearing. We will move right into the Board of Zoning and Adjustments. I opened that up. For the first item on that agenda for the board is variance request. The applicant requesting a variance located at three-sixty-four Penzo Avenue. Property is zoned R-three on the point-two-five acres. Brad, are you talking about this one?
I can.
Okay.
I wanna let you know that property is owned by Kyle and Brittany Sargent. They're requesting a setback variance to request to install a swimming pool on the property as comparable to other surrounding areas and houses in the neighborhood. The current setback listed in this zoning classification, the rear is twenty-five foot, and applicant is wishing to reduce to accommodate the installation of the pool. As we've went through and looked through this, as far as my recommendation goes, although I did not see a hardship, if you will, that staff recommends the approval of the variance for the required setback. Of course, I did say the Board of Zoning has the final vote on this, but we've done this for other properties in this neighborhood and in the city, so I do not see issue with requesting this, and all owners know that if something were to happen and they put in something that falls within the setback, they will be required to take up the deck, whatever it may be, it'll be on their expense, so they're aware of that.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion before we discuss.
Motion to approve variance request, three-six-four Penzo.
I have a second. Okay, got a motion and a second, and I'll open it up for discussion. I do have one item on there I would like to ask. So it's twenty-five foot right now. What's the request? Usually, we have a diagram of the pool.
There should be a diagram.
I couldn't tell from that there the exact.
Is the blue part the pool? And then the gray part, the concrete, I'm guessing?
Can you blow that up, Benny Madeline, on the screen? If you look at the twenty-five foot on the left-hand side of the picture.
Correct.
You see the deck is definitely falling within that twenty-five foot setback area.
That's what I'd like to try to find out, is what that, what that.
Mr. Sargent, would you like to come speak? Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, and we'll.
I'm Kyle, Sergeant, three-six-four Penzo Avenue. Yes, the blue is the pool, the like water line of the pool, and then the the concrete would be around it. The deck would be the only thing in the setback.
So proximally, how many feet is that?
Eight feet.
Eight foot, okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know, was eight foot on that. And that is a concrete, that is, that is.
It's gonna be like four-inch concrete around the pool.
Four foot? Concrete?
Well, four-inch thick.
Okay.
Just a.
Okay. Eight foot wide, okay. What are the questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call. And this is the approval of the variance request.
Kevin?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Passes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sargent.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to close the Board of Zoning and open up the Planning Commission meeting right now. Item number one is the conditional use. Applicants are requesting a conditional use permit at thirty-six seventeen Old Highway sixty-eight. The property is zone C-two commercial, located on three-point-three-six acres. Their request is for an impound yard. Brad?
Okay. This is conditional use to move the current towing service that was on Clint's Road, is that correct, Clint's Road, out to Old Highway sixty-eight where they already have some working on vehicles as we speak. The synopsis on this, the owner of the property is Robert T. Pruitt Revocable Trust with Robert T. Pruitt and Tara A. Schmoltzler? Did I say that right? I don't know if I said that right. As co-trustees, Premier Towing Recovery LLC is moving from their current location with hopes the location listed on this application. Currently, as per Washington County's assessor site of business with the name of Old Highway sixty-eight Cigar, and towing service currently operates at this same location. I want everyone to be transparent on that, what we did see on the assessor's site. So let me state this. When reviewing conditional uses, it's not just something that we go up and down. We have questions that we try to answer. First thing that we look at is the future land use. Looking at the future land use of this property, it's one of these, it's kind of rare, but it's a residential medium. Meaning residential housing will be there. Now, understand that the vision plan and the comprehensive plan is a working document. Something in two to three years, we'll probably have to revisit this again. In this area, we know where this is located at, so it will probably be changed, but at this time, this is what the future land use states. That will be residential medium, so. Basically, what I said, the proposed use does not align consistently with the future land use category. The lots south of Old Highway sixty-eight and this general vicinity are all currently zoned C-two with the category of R-M, so most of these around there are future land used as R-M. Also stated, however, the project is acceptable with the conditional use permit and should not be disruptive to the overall character of this area as it is currently zoned. Other guidelines we look at, we look at the development standards. We feel like this is a minimum impact on the surrounding properties. And also carrying out this, we look at design specifics for review and approval. This is within the provisions of the conditional use as we sit out the regulations. It is intended for conditional use in the C-two zoning, which is allotted. Now, one thing I will let you guys know, and I have put it in the packet, hoping you've had a chance to read it. If you go to our website, this is not listed under our conditional use. It has been voted on by City Council, I believe, back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen, as a tow yard. It is listed in conditional uses for C-two. So I wanna make sure, I think I put that in your packet, so that was voted on as an ordinance, and even though we did not see it in the website version. So once again, it is intended use for conditional use. Does it conform to all provisions herein set forth? And I put on there, the applicant has noted that there will be added fencing and a gate around this area. So that will help in this, in which we did have one person drop off a notice objecting to the conditional use. Once, one of them was, the fences were high enough to hide the junk cars, so we do have that listed in there as far as fencing goes.
Do you have the person's name on that on the?
Cook, last name is Cook.
Okay.
Bruce Cook and Doris Cook, I believe.
Thank you.
So as we put that for record.
Okay.
Okay. Other conditions we look at, was the proposed use designated, located, proposed to be operated, that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. Staff had no concerns that this project will have any negative impact on public health, safety, or welfare. Advocants will be using current driveways along the property. Another condition asked, the proposed land use is compatible with the property in surrounding areas. If you can look and see where the surrounding areas, how they're currently zoned. Once again, this is not, this is not the future land use, this is current zoning map. Size and shape of the site, including the site, shape and arrangement of proposed structures, as well as signage related thereto is keeping within ten of these regulations. There are no plans at this time for improvements to the land, other than adding a fence and gate and clearing of the brush, as notated in the previous question. Ingress, ingress issues. There's no proposed new ingress or egress for this permit. As notated earlier in item number seven, as notated earlier, verse, number two and five, a new fence and gate, along with clearing of the brush on this property, has been expressed, talking about landscaping and screening. Safeguards proposed to limit noxious or offensive emissions, including lighting, noise, glare, dust, odor, or address. There's no potential of these emissions, noise, glare, dust, or odor. Current lighting will be used at this location. So neighbor comments have been sent out. Once again, we have what you have in your packet. We did receive one before the meeting started. And staff recommendation is this, based on the project submitted and intended use of the project, staff recommends approval of this conditional use for the said land use is currently zoned, and conditions are listed there for the approval, talking about Health Department shows the existing subject system is adequate. If any outdoor run areas are proposed to be expanded beyond the currently fenced area, additional screening and buffering shall be required. The project shall develop generally as it is stated in the applicant's letter. Conditional use request must go before City Council for approval. Project shall comply with all local, state, and federal regulations, and any additional improvements to the site will require additional review, but staff does approve or recommend approval for this conditional use.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open it up for our citizen comments. Any citizen comments? Anybody online? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion before we discuss, commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditions.
I'll second.
Motion second. Open it up for discussion. What questions do y'all have?
Kyle agreed with Premier Towing.
Thanks, Kyle.
Kyle and I spoke, sorry. Kyle and I spoke earlier, and there are a couple of other conditions that he is willing to concede to than what's listed here, if we should go forward with the project. I believe one is to gravel, re-gravel the existing parking lot and the area in which the cars are gonna be held. So he's just not parking on dirt and mud. A new privacy fence across the front of the building, getting rid of the bobwire, or the chain link in bobwire that is currently there. Motion lighting around in the secured areas. And the last one I'd like to add in is maybe some landscaping across the front of the new privacy fence.
Yeah, so ultimately, what we're wanting to do is come in, clean it up. Obviously, I'm not going to keep, I can't dump a massive amount of money into it unless I know I can operate there. So what we'd like to do is build the fence around the back, gravel that, gravel in the front. If at all possible, in the meantime, do a covering on the chain link fence. My, I'm not opposed to doing some kind of fencing change around the front and landscaping, as long as it can be monitored and secure. My concern with the privacy fence across the front is if someone were to break in, it's harder to see police driving by, watching it, things like that.
Okay, I can kind of see that. I mean, I so all the cars are gonna be in the back.
Yes, all the cars will be in the lot. We're wanting to fence in out back.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when I looked out there, there was the, I say, it was the bays.
Yes, sir.
And then going around the sides, will there be any kind of maybe some side fencing on, like, to lead into the back that might block what's in the back rather than the front piece of it?
And yes, yes, so we have the chain link fence. It's completely fenced in now, and we're wanting to basically come off of that fence in the back area. So what we'd like to do is cover, we don't want it to be visible at all, so we would like to come in and cover the fencing in some kind of material.
Okay.
And then, obviously, a new fence built will be most likely a privacy fence, is what we would like to do.
Typically, I don't know.
We would prefer to do eight.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Eight would be probably more preferred for that type, but I'll leave it to the commission to decide. What other questions do y'all have?
I had a question about landscaping. What, what do you have planned for landscaping?
So this is the first I've heard about landscaping. However, I don't care to put some shrubs out. We've been working on cleaning the fence rows up. They were obviously severely overgrown. So I don't care to maybe do some type of small, basic shrub, something like that around it.
Should we put that as a condition?
I mean, I would like to add the conditions that, you know, I just listed, which he's agreed to a part of it, and then Imogene, is it legal to put a timeframe on that?
A timeframe to do what exactly?
To accomplish everything so that he can do business, but these conditions have to be met within a certain timeframe.
Yes, that'd be appropriate. Maybe about six months.
Not all costs has to come out at one time.
Sure.
So the only part that he's, doesn't wanna do, that I'm just trying to clarify, James, about the eight-foot fence across the front.
Eight foot or?
Up front, up front's not a lot. You can load it to thirty-six feet or thirty-six inches, three foot. You can change that per Planning Commission approval, but up front, front is only three foot.
Yeah, my biggest concern is changing the chain link fence, which was existing whenever I took the property over. At least now, which I don't care to put some kind of screen covering on it. My only concern with a privacy fence on the front is sometimes we do not deal with the most upstanding individuals, and my concern is with police driving by or someone driving by, seeing someone breaking in, it would obviously cut down on that ability.
What's the height of that chain link now?
It is six foot right now.
Okay. So it'd be that, that green tarp-type fencing is what you're requesting to put in there?
Yep.
And the other thing, just to think of, if they do want to do a complete surrounding, we would probably have to get fire marshal approval on that. Because I don't know if they require a Knox box, and that would be added expense, so just, I'd have to clarify that. Well, I don't know if it's all the way covered right now, that they'd probably get in there, fire department.
It is, and we have a knock lock on our, on our other lot, so yes, we're familiar with that.
Gotcha.
So you're wanting to keep chain link across the front, and then you're gonna eight-foot privacy fence, three sides?
Well, so I would like to leave the fence that's there, because that will not be used as the impound lot.
Gotcha.
What I'm wanting to do is essentially the field behind it, the land behind it, I want to fence it in and use an existing driveway that goes into that field to go to the lot where the cars would be stored, so they would be stored
Behind the eight-foot fence.
Behind the eight-foot fence.
Okay.
Is it, is this gonna be, how long do you keep cars in on this lot?
By the time they get processed, usually the longest is about ninety days. We don't do salvage or anything like that. Yes, it's basically the same operation we have there on Clint's Road, just moving it out there.
I wanna make sure I'm understanding right. So you're operating now on Clint's Road, but not at this location?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So this will be, this will be new operating at this location?
Yes, sir.
What would be the difference in putting up a privacy fence or putting fabric or whatever on the fence that you can't see through?
The screening still has a low amount of visibility through it. You know, you can see larger objects, it outlines things like that. Or at least the screening I've ever dealt with.
Somewhat see-through.
Somewhat, yeah.
So if you can top your fence currently as is, that means they would have access to the cars or the property in the back, or is that gated off?
So if they, if they came over the fence that's currently there, they would not be in the same lot with the?
So is that gonna be totally separated off with the drive? I mean, you're gonna use that set little, I guess, driveway there to enter in and out of the privacy fenced area?
Correct, yeah.
So from the front of your building, would you be able to access those, that area?
If they, if they jumped the fence behind it, they would.
If they jumped the fence in front of it?
Well, you'd jump the fence into the current, the current fence, you'd jump it from the road, and then you would go to the backside of it and go over again.
You could.
Yes.
But you, there is gonna be something separating it?
The chain link fence that's across the back right now.
Okay, and then inside of that chain link fence is gonna be a privacy fence?
On the backside of it.
Just on the backside? We define back? South side?
Would be the.
Consider the back?
Sets at an angle, I would say southwest side of it.
Okay. I'm gonna have to have a better picture or something, because now I'm like all crossed up on the fence. Like, I thought I had it straight, and then you kept asking a question.
Yeah, come on up here, sir.
I'm Donald Rogers, on Donald Rogers Record Recovery here in Tawney Town, too. We're on Clint's Road in that impound. So basically, what they're wanting to do is the fence across the back of the shop, that will all be privacy fence crossed in, too. Acrossed it. So he was really not wanting any fence up in the front. All you'll see is the shop and his records, and it'll be parked there. Other than that, there'll never be no wrecks, no cars parked. In the spot that's in the chain link fence will just be his own personal trucks. Then everything else that gets towed in will be in behind the privacy fence, which will use the other driveway. So the main part of the impound, which is a triangle, will all be privacy fence on it and everything. Does that help you a little bit better?
Yep, well, that's originally where I was, and then I'm like, I don't know.
And that's the reason why, you know, when we built this lot down here, you know, they didn't put no landscaping or anything, but they required the fence to be a privacy fence and everything, so they couldn't see inside. My concern is just like him. If you privacy fence all the way across the front of the shop, which one, I think city has a code that you can't privacy fence across the front of a business on it?
We can make an exception.
Well, I understand that, but it sure makes a problem. Like he said earlier, we don't deal with the best citizens in the world. That's why a lot of times there are cars at our yard, because DWI's and no driver's licenses and stuff like that. And concern is, you got your trucks parked behind the privacy fence and you can't see them, and if they wanna cause vandalism, they can climb over the fence and burn the trucks down or beat them up. At least this way, Tawney Town PD drives by, they can look in there and see if anybody's in that fenced-in area there.
With the green screen.
With the green screens.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to have the eight-foot fence in front of the shop. You have your eight-foot fence surrounding your impound, the actual impound lot.
Right.
Which is what you're wanting to do, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, there's, and I don't know why that'd be an issue.
I don't know if you guys know the place had been bought before Kyle rented it. It was pretty shabby-looking. And they've spent a lot of time up there cutting brush, and they spent all last week cutting brush behind the shop, which still got some more to be cut down there, and then that, like I said, that'll all be privacy fence back there, so anything in the front would just basically be the wreckers that he's not driving at the time will be spotted at one end on gravel, and rest of it will just be mowed and kept clean. And the deal was, if it gets grinded, they're gonna go in and and paint the shop and get it painted so it looks decent, and I mean, that's what they've been trying to do now, is try to clean it up, because it was a pretty good eyesore.
And you're talking about putting the green screen on the existing chain link fence?
Yes.
Right there.
Along the road there?
Yes.
Okay.
Why, why, why is that, why do we think that's necessary? Because it's hideous. Have you seen green screen on chain link fence? That chain link fence looks nice.
Asking for a privacy fence.
May I make a suggestion to commissioners? They will, if, I mean, they've got in their application anyway, to put a new fence in. The fence permit will still have to come to permitting for us to review. And part of the condition is that we will bring the fence permit to you guys to review, if you feel like that's okay, because they will still have to have to apply for the fence permit, so we can send that out, let you guys look at it, you guys give us a comment, or at least not holding up their conditional use should you choose to move forward, but we can definitely put that as a condition in there that conditional use, or the fence permit has to come before you guys for approval.
Very good. Let's add that.
At the?
Yeah.
Fence permit.
You done that for the back?
Yeah, well, I mean, they have to, they have to provide a site plan, what they're gonna do, and they'll have pictures. So that's part of the fence permit application. So once they have the site plan and whatever they're gonna do, we can definitely present that back to you guys.
Okay, so if we vote on it tonight, what is?
Well, you can just put in there that, you know, it's, the fence, fence permit has to be approved by you guys. Put your thoughts on that.
Very good, thank you.
So the language would read conditional use approved upon?
Well, the fence permits already, or the fence is already included in here that they're gonna provide a new fence. I think suffice you, what you guys are wanting to see is what's it gonna look like?
No, I wanna if you put the green up on the the chain link, that's gonna look terrible, and if you leave the chain link, it's gonna look terrible.
If you put an eight-foot fence or six foot, it's gonna look terrible, so let's, it just, it won't look good. It just won't look good.
Well, the only thing, and the only thing, and I'm, we need to double-check, and Madeline and I can double-check tomorrow about the, even if we can put the green.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I personally do not want a privacy fence on our commercial pieces on the front part of the commercial. Me personally, I don't, I don't see that.
Well, I agree with that, too. Look, looking at the residences across the street, that's my, my first thought is, okay, here's, here's a commercial operation across the street from, looks like some pretty nice homes. The chain link, to me, seems to suffice for, for the business now. Wanna make sure I'm understanding right, but there will be another fence that the cars that have been towed in will be behind?
Correct.
So the people, people in the houses across the street, they will not see those, they will not, if it's a
they will not see those, they will not, if it's a, if it's a lousy looking vehicle, they're not going to be looking at that across the street from their nice home?
Correct.
Okay.
I personally prefer just the chain link over anything. Even the screen, whatever it's called.
Great with me.
Yep.
I think, and for sure not privacy. I agree with Kevin.
So with these added conditions, you have agreed to do the grading piece of it. You've, you're okay with that piece of it, the gravel?
Yes.
Yep. So that, that was one, so we'll add that one to it. The, the fence will come through, through a fence permit that will have the eight-foot privacy fence enclosed where all cars will be stored?
Correct.
You had one on the landscape, and you'll put some shrub?
That's what y'all want.
If, if we need, what kind of shrubs would you prefer? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm not trying. Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I'm struggling with a shrub on a chain link in front of a commercial like that. And it's been there for a while already, so it's not like it's something that's?
I think, I think one thing we can do, suggest?
Throw gravel in front of it?
One thing we can suggest is we have a site plan. And even though it may not be a large scale, but at least a site plan, whatever thing will look like, landscaping, fencing, parking, you know, even though it's going to be parking in the back as far as the cars go. But, but anyway, we can, we can have a site plan.
Okay.
You know, part of the condition.
Okay.
That work?
And your other one, James, was motion lighting in the back. I don't know if that's, is that something that y'all do, or is that something?
We have solar motion lights on our lot now. They're not, we face them straight down over the fence, so they're not obscene to anybody.
Okay. So you're okay with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, very good. Okay. What other questions do y'all have? So I would ask for, I think we need to amend this to add these, these? Okay, I'll need a motion to include the site plan for these fencing items and whatnot to be added.
I make a motion to add the site plan with the conditions.
Very good. And? Somebody would like to second?
I'll second.
Very good. Any other comments?
Are we sure what conditions we're adding? Because it seems like we're all over the place. I mean, he's going to regravel the storage area.
The site, the site plan will state all that out.
I don't even understand the site plan.
The site plan is?
Is on the site plan, it's going to say regravel area? Is it going to say removal of barbed wire?
Yeah, we can, we can ask on the site plan, we can do whatever we, we're asking to do. The site plan will give you a visual of everything that we've asked to do.
So we need to exit all this out, and then just put number seven, site plan?
Site plan.
That's it? And then with the site plan, we'll have these?
Yes.
Items added to it?
Yes.
Okay, that's way less complicated.
Try to make it, try to make it.
Ask one other thing. Madeline, can you pull up that, the conditional use or the description of what a tow yard is supposed to have in the code? Because I'm pretty sure it says something about being screened off from, from roads.
In the back?
The impound lot will be?
Where all the cars are going to be in the back will be totally, you're not going to see the cars back there. You're going to see the existing building and gravel and a couple of their tow trucks in there. You're not going to see any cars that they're impounding. They're all going to be back behind the eight-foot fence.
What about other, I mean, how many cars you got there now?
There's stuff I own there now, which I plan on storing that in the back, too. I just, I don't want it outside of a fence, unsecure.
So with no time other than a tow truck is the only thing I'm ever going to see in the front of that building when I go by and your personal daily drivers?
Aside from my personal, personal pickup or something like that.
That's what I'm saying, your personal daily?
Yeah, you're not going to see wrecked vehicles or impounded vehicles up there.
You might have somebody bringing somebody else to pick up a car or something like that.
Correct, yes. But they should use the other driveway to the lot.
Easy deal, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so since everybody's confused and stumbled here, site plan will be added. What other, y'all good on that?
Yep.
Okay. So can we vote? Let's do a vote.
James?
Oh.
Candy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you.
To the county.
So when, when will we see the site plan? When he comes back for a fence permit or what?
Please.
If you can, let's, let's try to have a site plan within 30 days before we review. That'll include the things we were talking about tonight. If that's okay. Or if we? It will review it administratively first and going forward if we need to move it to planning commission. If they even need to approve it, then we'll move it to planning commission first. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Item number three is the city, city, I know. Rezone request, sorry. Applicant requesting a rezone at 1076 North Barrington. Rezone request is from agricultural to RE estates and R2 single-family lots located on five acres. Y'all do not have to stay if you don't want to. Who's, you discussing this one, Brad?
Uh huh.
Thank you, sir.
Property is owned by Philip Myers Holdings LLC. Is represented by Mr. Jason Lips Meyer, who is here tonight, and is currently zoned agriculture. He has proposed an incidental subdivision that includes three track splits that would need to make the lots to conform to his current zoning. Two lots requested would have to be rezoned to R2, while the remaining lot will be zoned, rezoned RE. As we've looked through and answered the questions as best we can, we feel like there's no, anything hindering from the rezone. The condition would be approval of the incidental application that has been submitted. So, but we had to make these lots conforming. So if you can look through here, you can see the master lot to begin with is agriculture. And on the back page, you can see what the two lots are going to look like when it's split off. One thing of note, we did receive an objection letter, it should be in your packet, to that, talking about the traffic. I think I did have one person call us, and they have no objections to it. So this was, this was supposed to be heard last, last commission meeting, and I failed to put the R2 rezone on there. So as far as public hearing goes, I had to do that correctly. So that's why you're seeing this now. But that's what we have.
Very good, thank you. I'll open it up for citizen comment. Any citizen comment? Anybody online? Nobody online? I will entertain a motion before we discuss.
Motion approved.
Oh, go ahead.
You go ahead, Donnie.
I move we accept the rezoning request.
Second.
Okay, open for discussion. What questions do y'all have? If any.
I have a question. Why these, what is this going to do to the traffic on, on this objection? What?
Well, there's really, right now, there's already an existing house that's on the corner there of one of the R5s or R2s. So you have two other lots that could be two other pieces of property. I don't see a, me personally don't see a huge impact on, on traffic coming in there on, on two additional possible houses.
Well, one of the tracks already has a house there, so?
That's correct.
Yeah. So we're looking at maybe one additional house? Yeah, you can.
Yes, sir.
This is Mr. Lips Meyer.
Jason Lips Meyer, 2254 Wildcat Creek. And I'm the managing, managing member of Phillips Myers Holding. So there's an existing house, it's about 100 years old, and the best way to preserve it would be to split it off in a half acre, give or take lot, and sell it. And that's my intention, as you all are aware. If it stays a five-acre ag, all the adjacent properties are all residential right now, if I'm not mistaken. And across the road is, I believe, George's Farm, which is about to be, have a major road change potentially when four, or when 112 gets widened. So they're going to change the route of the road traffic anyway. Not sure how that's going to affect the property. But right now, I see that selling off the house would be beneficial. Keep it. And then having another residential lot there that's in the same lot parcel size as the houses along that road there, near it. And I have no plans for the RE, the three and a half acres. It's going to be RE right now.
What questions y'all have? Seeing none, I'm, yeah, go ahead.
Is this what used to be the Zupo?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so, so your group has bought that?
My LLC bought it. It was five acres. They couldn't go less than five acres without getting it rezoned. So they rezoned it, or not rezoned it, they resized the parcel. And they set it to five acres. And I can't split off the half acre house from the other four and a half acres without rezoning it.
Even that three and a half acres, that's a tough parcel. It's pretty slanted, so it's not, I don't know how much is that, is that in flood zone down at the bottom?
Some of it probably is.
Probably is, yes. I would say it probably is, so. Even that towards the 112 is probably not going to be. But any other questions, commission? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote to approve the rezoning of 1076 North Barrington.
Donnie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And item number three, which I thought was item number four, but it is item number three, is the Tawny Town City items of 153-210 and 153-181. Those items are the off-street parking that we had to have the hearing on tonight and the prohibited signs that we had already updated. I think we had previously voted on, but I'd like to keep it in line with our meeting and vote on it after our public hearing to make it more uniform that everybody, when they, they hear it, they're not going to wonder why we didn't vote on it. So I requested that to be added and voted on tonight. So we have already seen this. I will open it up for citizen comment before we discuss. Nobody online? Okay, I will ask for a motion on these two items, commission.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second, and any comments?
Are you approving both at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Seeing no comments, roll call, approving 153-210 and 153-181.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Those three items, the conditional use, the rezone request, and those two items there, we'll have to go to city council for their approval before it is?
Well, first they'll go to the Cal meeting, would be the first Tuesday of the month.
There you go. Thanks for the correction. Yep. Okay. With that being said, any comments from staff?
I do have a couple. First and foremost, you've seen the building activity report had a, had a good commercial valuation on some commercial projects. So you can see the building report there. Project list has been updated. One thing that was brought to our attention today, and wants you guys to think about this, please let me know. I told them I'd get back with them. The owners of the Bariloche project here in Tawny Town off Clint's Road, they have put their application in for final plat and have paid. They're wanting to schedule some time to go and do a final walkthrough with the city staff. They're requesting if you wanted to do a special session in order, once we have our walkthrough, for you guys to approve that. If you could do a special session, they're antsy to get going. I told them I would ask you guys. So you can let me know. And then second thing, was there something else Madeline was? That's the only thing I was trying to remember? We did the waste management walkthrough. We did waste management walkthrough in Palos Cerro, first phase walkthrough. So that has been, been completed. I was trying to think, there's something else. But anyway, the Bariloche owners did want to know if you could do a special session in order to approve the final plat application.
What timeframe are you looking on?
We still, we still have to do a walkthrough. We just got the application today. We have to schedule the walkthrough, so, but I wanted to put it on your radar to see if you guys have anything going over in the next couple of weeks that would hinder us from doing a special session, if you wanted to do it.
Donnie's open? Candy, you on vacation? Traveling in your trailer?
Well, how come special session just speed up the two-week process, I guess?
I'm good.
At the same time as money, I guess.
I guess so.
Yeah. You're good, Josh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. James?
So we're looking to schedule around the first of May?
That's to be determined. We don't, we don't know. We'll give us?
I'm not available in the middle of the month, so?
Middle of May?
Yeah. So it'd have to be?
Perfect, let's do it then. Yeah, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Motherfucker's a rubber steam. Nobody is weird.
But no, other than that, staff, staff has no more comments.
Okay, I will ask for comments from the commission. Donnie, you have any comments, young man?
Do not have any comments.
James?
I'm good.
Candy?
No comments.
Wow, no comments. And Josh?
Where are we at on the, the R3L?[1699.48]